All this meeting to order is contained that was noticed and posted for our work session. It's this Friday, October 28th, 2022 at 1 o'clock PM. When the Board of Supervisors Executive Conference Room will be opening, they'll be due in 50. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion, and we'll begin with the roll call. District 1?
Good morning, Madam Chair, or afternoon, I should say. Crosby is here.
District 2, Supervisor English is present. District 3?
Supervisor Judd is here.
Thank you. We have a complete board for the work sessions. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling 602-679-7513, or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 218144344. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 or direction. To remind the public that work sessions are a time for the county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. As always, for the sake of our record, introductions at a work session are made when you begin to speak. So if you are directed to speak, give your name and your title, please, for the record. Today, we have a discussion and possible direction regarding the expanded hand count of ballots as approved by the Board of Supervisors on October 24th, 2022. And so I believe that our county administrator, Rich Karwatska, has a process of explaining where we go from here.
Yes, so I asked our election director, Director, Lisa Mara, to start the conversation off with explaining the process currently that is set in place and the deadlines and timelines that have come and gone, the process in itself for hand counting. I think we'll start there. I think that'd be helpful.
Good afternoon. Lisa Mara, Director of Elections. So our current process for the political party hand count is outlined in the Arizona statutes and the Elections Procedures Manual is the same one we've done for many, many years. Since I took over in 2017, we have a meeting early in the year. So this process starts very early in an election cycle with the two party chairs meeting with me, and we go through a calendar of the whole year. So we lay out all the dates for candidate filing, for voter, last day to register to vote, and then deadlines for nominating their political party observers and their hand count members. So in this year, we met on May 4th at 4 o'clock in Sierra Vista. Both present, party chairs were present, and myself. And both the party chairs that we have, the Democratic Chair Elizabeth Tendell and the Republican Chair Robert McGowan, are in their second term. So we've been doing this for quite a while, and I did the same process with their predecessors who were in those roles. So on May 4th, we went through the whole outline of the primary and the general election with all the dates and deadlines, and everybody agreed upon those. So we did the primary election hand count, and that was performed under the same exact process that we go through every time with no discrepancy and within state error margins, which are very tight. It was 100%. So the agreed deadline for both party chairs to provide all their political party observers for the general election and their hand count members pass on October 21st. Both parties submitted their required six people for hand count along with several alternates and several hundred observers, the 22 of them. So the hand count process is currently underway once they start naming those members. The hand count process must start within 24 hours after Election Day. So that's completed by both party chairs meeting at our office at 2 o'clock the day after the election. That's where the random draw by lots are conducted. So they take turns drawing the races, the contested races. There will be four that are chosen for the general election. And then the random draw of the vote centers. We have 17 vote centers, and they range from 90 votes, maybe in one of our smaller ones, up to 1,500, 1,600 in a larger one. So it's by lot. They all get put into a hat, this wonderful hat with chips and all the numbers, and that's how they draw. So then we must draw two vote centers. And then in the procedure we have in state law, they draw a 1% minimum of early ballots cast, and that's completed on election morning, depending on how many ballots were actually tabulated. And normally, we have all that we've received tabulated. So it's really around 400 is a minimum early ballots. And again, those are random batches, but as we're counting those, we have to sequester them with a result report for that particular batch. So it's not every single batch ballot that we do, but those are sequestered. And how we do that is we take, we always have to look at if the hand count gets expanded, which is a process in law. That's how we base those numbers. So we have to have enough to have it expanded up three times in case it doesn't agree with the numbers. So we sequester about 12 batches of 200 ballots. And then, once all the lots are drawn for the vote centers, the contested races they're going to do, and the early batches, that completes the start of the hand count. So that's on the day after the election, Wednesday. Because keep in mind, while this is happening, we're still counting early ballots that were dropped off, provisional ballots, we're still dealing with all the audit chain forms is the massive amount of work. So on Saturday, the weekend, the first weekend after the election, at 9 o'clock, both groups show up, all 12 members. If somebody is an alternate or somebody doesn't show up, then we call the party chair to make sure we can get an alternate. We sign them in. They're assigned positions. They show ID to make sure they really are the person that was recommended by the party chair. And then we do training. It's almost an hour of training because Arizona statute is very strict in the Procedures Manual on how the hand count process works. All four boards, or however many we have, three people on each board, are doing the same races. Some are just doing vote center ballots, some are doing early ballots, but they're all counting the same thing. And there's a stacking method that we use that's outlined in statute. So basically, the three, the three groups, the three people in the group, one is an inspector, two are judges, we hold up the ballot, the inspector holds up the ballot, the other few judges look at it, and it's either yes for this person's name or no. So it's a yes/no. Then you count all the yeses and write those on the score sheet, and then you go to the no pile to count those candidates. And then they're verified by each race, and then they move on to the next race. It takes about five to nine hours to complete what we have done. And then, in the event they draw very large vote centers, it could carry over into the next day. So the participants are paid $50 per person, and that is for the whole thing. Doesn't matter if it takes one day or if it'll take them three days. So the people that we request they send are able to come back in case they need to finish it. We've been lucky to have some long days to finish it in a day and not have to carry it over. Because again, we're still trying to audit all the forms, all getting ready for the canvas date, which is a very short time. We also provide lunch for them, not a very fancy lunch because there's no place to go here for lunch, and we can't have you leave for an hour and a half out of the day to come back. So it's usually a working lunch. And then within two days after that hand count, all the reports are required by the Secretary of State, and then they're filed online. So I have paperwork from the primary that we did, so you could see how that lays out. But their deadlines to name their members came and went, and we both provided them without saying anything to indicate we were going to have changes at this later date, which is incredibly problematic to change anything this close to an election. So that's basically the hand count process, Madam Chair.
Thank you. That's pretty thorough. The board members have any questions at this point in time about how the process that's been established takes place?
No questions at this time? Thank you, Madam Chair.
No, thank you.
And I think at this point in time, I would leave it to Supervisor Crosby, Supervisor Judd of what the proposal that you guys have regarding the agenda item that was voted on.
It is in Mr. Stevens' hands, to my, the best of my knowledge, to the way we passed the agenda items. It said the county recorder or the county elections director or other officer in charge of the elections. It sounds like Ms., I don't know, I can't speak for Ms. Mara and what McIntyre, Mr. Attorney McIntyre has advised Ms. Mara.
Okay, so are both of the supervisors fine with the process that was just outlined by Ms. Mara?
It depends on what you're talking about. Are you talking about only the 2% of precincts? Or are you talking about expanded, which is what we voted on the 24th?
Right. I believe you talked about the 2%, and there is a process for expanding it. What's the process for expanding?
So the process for expanding it under the Procedures Manual is if the numbers are off, they're not in the range, which the range is very small, the Secretary of State's committee meets before every election and determines those. So it's basically three, three votes, three votes off. So if they are off, it automatically expands into additional batches. That's why we have to sequester so many ahead of time to make sure if it has to be expanded, that that can be done. And it can happen up to three times to do that expansion.
So that's the process? Supervisor Crosby, is that the process you're talking about, or is there a process?
Uh, I don't know. I didn't have any further comments at this time, Mr. Karwatska, to tell you the truth.
I do. I have something I'd like to say. We just received a, I did say I'd go to the Attorney General, but Senator Gowen did that for me, and we just received from them that we can do a full hand count of early ballots cast. Basically, I'll read you. "In sum, the office concludes that pursuant to ARS 16602, the board is permitted to perform an expanded hand count audit of all ballots cast in person at 100% of the precincts or voting centers located in Cochise County. Moreover, the board is permitted to perform an expanded hand count audit of 100% of early ballots cast in Cochise County. The board must limit the number of competitive statewide and federal races audited to five." Um, we know that. And actually, I believe it may be four. Sometimes I read four, and sometimes I read five. I'm willing to go with that. I knew that from the very beginning. It is good to have the Attorney General's backing on this. That's all for now. So it looks like if we can't do that in the actual process of hand counting the 2%, we will wait, as indicated many times, my preference is to wait till the entire election process is over and people have the results according to the machines and Lisa Mara's very successful audits up to this point, and I imagine this year will be successful as well. And then the election is, is actually called and notified the public, and Lisa's can relax a little bit, and Mr. Stevens can relax a little bit, and that is when I'd like to proceed with 100% hand count that is led by the people. We have a lot of, a lot of things that are put in place or are working very well. I even have had a couple of people, one a Democrat this morning volunteer to, to count for the Democrat side that, I think that might be the hardest thing because we've had animosity, but we're starting to build bridges, and she's working with me, and I think we may even be able to have the percentage we need. But however many that they can come up with, Democrat Libertarian Parties and the Republicans are ready to balance that out, and a lot of people want to be observers as well from both sides. So I think if we can just kind of act like I intended all along, and I don't exactly know what Mr. Crosby, his intention was, but if we can start this as a hand count audit separate from our actual results and complete it afterwards, then that's my goal. And it wouldn't affect the results of the election itself. It would just be simply an audit to determine our, to verify the effectiveness. And like I said a lot of times, I'm still praying that it's very, very verified, that it comes out 100%. I'm so excited for that. That's kind of what I'd like to show, so, okay?
Could I, could I ask a question here at this point of either one of you that wishes to answer? You know, we're at the, at the 11th hour here, and your party chair, when he was picking people, and it does come through the chair, not through individuals on the street coming up and say, "I want to be a counter," selected six people, and that was the process. The process has been in place for a long time. If you have, if you truly believe that this process is one that you feel that we need to follow for whatever reason, I'm wondering why you didn't do any planning? Why you didn't go to the Democrats? Why you didn't go to the legislature and put it in place so that there was no wiggle room here? So any change, whether you change it a tiny bit to go from 2% to 4% or, or from 4% to 100, any change is a change in the process, and that's going to kick into place something that isn't in law, but has been verified in the courts. The Purcell Doctrine says you can't change the election procedures close to an election. And don't tell me you're not trying to change the procedures, because any change is a change in the procedures. So what are you going to do when, when people say, "I, you know, I'm going to sue you because you've changed the procedures." That's the Purcell Doctrine.
That's why we're leaving Ms. Mara's process completely out of our plans. The plans that we were, that we're working on.
The election process?
It will be independent of the election process, in my understanding. What I'd like to say, though, is-
Let's flush this down a little bit. Do you believe that you can have anyone touch those ballots after an election?
Yes, legally, you can. It's more of an audit. That's why whenever Mr., when Mr. Crosby proposed, or Supervisor Crosby proposed the hand count audit, because I was doing just a hand count, it's more of an audit. It leans more to that side. So that's why.
Does that bring up any legal issues that I need to be concerned about?
Well, I have a question, I think, for Ms. Mara first. Your regular hand count, you mentioned sequestering additional ballots so that you can follow the correct procedures under 602. Approximately how long prior, sorry, how long before the canvas is that hand count typically done, or typically completed?
The Saturday after the election. So this, this year, that's what, the 12th, and we have to canvass the election on the 18th. So here, here are some things for you to think of while you're thinking of legal issues. The chain of custody for ballots is very disturbing because we are most likely going to have at least a local recount on a race, and most likely a state and/or federal. We'll know those, but the Secretary of State won't canvass until December 5th. At that point is when we would do any recounts that we have that were connected to the state and federal races, because we cannot do three or four different hand counts. So that's one thing, a recount. That's one thing to consider. The other thing is if both parties don't participate, even though they've given their names, they could, one could say, "We're not going to participate." If that's the case, the hand count doesn't happen. And the other problem with sequest, and it's a challenge, not a problem, to sequester those ballots, because you have to use the exact machine count. So the batches are not, there's no way in the tabulator to print a batch report per batch. They're consecutive, so you start with zero, and then each batch adds on. That's why we do the first few batches every day when it's zeroed out, so that we don't, you can't, if you put a batch result report with each batch, that's problematic as well. Even though there's a process and no one sees them, that's still problematic. There's no way to run one later, and I hadn't prepared for that. I've already started tabulating, and I'm not doing batch reports for everything, just the sequestered ones that we need. So if you go back later and run that same batch through the tabulator, you could do that to get a report, but that is not the exact report that's in the official count, which is concerning.
So roughly, though, the timeframe for what Supervisor Judd was talking about would be from Monday, the Monday after the election to the date the election is canvassed on the 8th?
That thing should happen until after the state canvass is December 5th, because the board canvasses at 4:00 PM on November 18th. But the Secretary of State is the fifth of December. And then at that point, if we had recounts to look at, that's another part of the custody issue with the ballots.
Your concern would be breaking any chain of custody regarding the ballots at any point along that process prior to the canvas conducted by the Secretary of State?
Absolutely, for many reasons. One, just chain of custody with law of the ballots. All the people that are on the ballots, that's a whole other potential, because ballots, again, are retained for a two-year period.
I just wanted to get, I, I, well, I just, I'll note my substantial concern with everything else. The agenda item that's said that such audit shall be completed prior to the canvas of the general election results by the Board of Supervisors. So, and I think Supervisor Crosby, you didn't have any additional comments, but mentioned Recorder Stevens, so maybe the both supervisors intended for Mr. Stevens to provide what his thought or plan is to try to complete this expanded hand count prior to the canvas done by the county. But- I just want to-
Can I advise you numbers?
Yeah, just to clarify, because it seems like Supervisor Judd, you're mentioning this separate audit happening after all these processes and the normal processes taking place that was just explained by Ms. Mara. And, and after this whole process and certification and canvassing and all those dates, then the separate audit by Recorder Stevens would happen.
That wasn't what the rules were.
I understand, but I just wanted to clarify what Supervisor Judd just mentioned, just for my own clarification.
That is what I said.
The big variable of all this is going to be how many ballots are, until it goes until it's all done. So I took the numbers from the 23rd general, 22 primary, added divided by two, about estimate, I gave up 35,000 early ballots selection. We certainly have about 17,000 that have either gone through my office or laid, go through my office. I got it in hand. It's my office, my office. We estimated roughly 10,000 electionally ballots. But until it's all said and done, I can only predict, you estimate what to expect. One thing on the hand count, board members, the actual deadline is Tuesday. The estimation of the, of the, probably about, estimations of at least 50 each party, I must issue with reading good. Six people, it's easy to put in, 20 or 30 people's, that's what I'd be discussing before this.
I think that's the other clarification I need is the agenda item talked about 16602B. It's a specific statute section of reference, and I believe that's only election date ballots.
I must have got it right. Because one or more secure facilities, so it could be multiple locations.
Well, I was just referring to the statute section.
Yeah, I'm still alive, but I'm a lawyer. I didn't read them.
And I believe that 16602F is regarding early ballots. If we were talking-
Yes, they're separate statute.
So, but that's the also clarification that there's confusion about. It's that maybe Supervisor Crosby maybe can get an understanding. So when you, when you proposed the agenda item, was it early ballots and election day ballots?
Well, Mr. Karwatska, what I'm looking at is the memo that I mentioned, which is from 2020, and I mentioned this at the meeting, and I have since sent that memo to Mr. Maddox about this memo from 2020, November 4th, titled "From Mark Bernovich, Signed by Joseph Canfield to the Honorable Clint Hickman of the Maricopa Board of Supervisors." And he, in this cited the citation, ARS 16602B. So that's why I put it in there. And this is an expansion of, what do they call it? Do they call it hand count? Expanding the hand count to 5% of voting center locations. So that's why I use that.
But that, that section and what you were referring to is just election day ballots? Not early voting?
I'd have to open it up and take a look at it, Mr. Karwatska, and I'm not going to do that right now.
I can say something about that, though. We just, we were implored by the Secretary of State to write a letter and say we would abide by all applicable statutes regarding the hand count of ballots, which we did agree to. She also implored that we take out 16602B as our basis. I, I think we handled it without saying we're going to take out 16602B, just saying that we would abide by all statutes applicable.
Can I interject here and ask the board to think again about what you voted on? Remember, it's already passed, two-to-one vote on, on the process, and it was to do 100%. So-
100% of precincts, Madam Chair, not 100% of ballots. That's what passed, all precincts. I'm looking at here, hand count audit of all county precincts.
Okay, so that's a change to the process that-
But it isn't an illegal change. The Secretary of State did not continue saying that what we're going to do is illegal.
The difference between the legality, which, you know, we were told in the beginning that this probably shouldn't happen, and we were also told about the, the Purcell Doctrine that says you don't change anything this soon to an election. Now, why?
Madam Chair, your point's been made. Your point's been made, and I'm okay to talk about how this will be done, but all you want to do is make it not get done. So I'm not interested in that discussion. I'm interested in the discussion of how it will be done.
So Recorder Stevens, you mentioned numbers. How large of a facility would you need to conduct this? How many people would you need? And where is that secure facility? Because I would guess, Ms. Mara, that there is not sufficient space in the Elections Department for 100-plus people.
That is correct.
Well, first question, does the county have a building that can house 300 people? Because you've got tables, chairs, that would fit them. Does the county have one?
But in the planning that you've done-
Yes.
Have you even talked to the Democrats?
I have not, but I have emailed already to fill this meeting, too. This is-
But we're talking about something that we, it's a fait accompli. If you can do it, you can't do it without the parties, the parties-
You can't get to D, and you do it A, B, and C.
But you can plan.
Yeah, and this has been on my-
You plan for a room and the numbers of people, but you haven't talked to the people that might participate or not?
I'm kidding. Okay, this, this wasn't my obligation to do. obligation to do. Just a week or so ago.
Right.
I'm learning as I go. So I'm going through, you know, I was told I was, I'd have no legal representation three days ago. So I've been working on that also. So if the county attorney would protect me in this process, I wouldn't have had to do that. I wouldn't have worked on this part. So I'm working, progressing through this. I had to come up with the numbers to find out what I'm working on. I don't know how many people I'm gonna have in terms of how many days I need or where it's gonna go. So the process is A, B, C, D, okay? I'm getting there. The email is gonna go out. Uh, and and like what the county said, if they choose not to show up, this just all goes away. So and what they show up with is what I work with. Uh, the person in charge has that discretion to say, if I don't have enough people, it's not gonna happen also. And that 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 decision will be made at that time, which is about two weeks from now.
And so I I would have a question for the the supervisors. Do the supervisors understand that in the event the, really, the one person, in the event the Democratic Party Chair refuses to participate, which is required on the statutes.
But that's too much.
Right. Um, in in the event the the Democratic Party refuses to participate and doesn't nominate additional individuals, that this hand expanded hand count simply cannot occur under law?
Well, Mr. McIntyre, when I ask my legal advisors about potential legal issues, they usually indicate something like, I should wait until a potential problem arises. Now, that's kind of against my natural uh inclination to prepare, but that's what they usually indicate I should do. I have no control over what the Democrats do.
Supervisor Judd, do you?
Yeah, I have a comment on that. Um, I have, like I said, I personally have had some Democrats say, well, we want to be there fifty fifty, and I say we have to step up. Um, I have been suggesting that they contact their chairman, and I believe that they are. Um, I also have been made aware of a social media post where she was um asked, it was on their own Facebook page, where she was asked if they would participate if this were to go on. And um it, she said something to the effect that it looks like I'd have to. Um, now, I'm not gonna bank anything on anything social media, but I I do feel like it would be only fitting to reach out to them. I think that's the right thing to do, and I appreciate Mr. Stevens for putting that to that, a typed letter to that. And I have a letter ready to go out to my friends as well, based on questions that some people have asked me. I have responded, and they're like, oh, well, I want to participate. So it's not, you know, by statute, it's it's a comfortable thing. They want to be there to see it. They want to witness. There's just a lot of things that people want, even the Democrats. So I don't think we're gonna come up with as big of a pushback as it sounds like. Um, I know when you read the emails and you look at that, there's a lot of them on both sides. There's very um strong participation from the Republicans, but that doesn't mean there isn't a response that could be strong. So I think we have to have a chance to go out to them. And the ones I've gone out to personally, which is where my realm stands, is kind of personally within my district, family, friends. Um, I'm seeing not a change of heart by any means, but if you're gonna do it, we want to be part of it. Think that's gonna play out.
There are a couple more requirements on this. You can't have more than seventy five percent of what the party participate. Uh, and the the members that represent the party do not have to be a member of that party. So the Democrats, Republicans, could have any of those P and Ds and others represent them. They don't have to be Republican or Democrat.
The chairs still has to abide those needs.
Right. It all goes through the chairs.
So and and I I try to clarify at least one point that our Elections Director will still proceed in the manner and the course that she set out. And we're gonna still go through that process, I believe Supervisor Judd. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, Supervisor Crosby.
I don't know what Madam Mara is gonna do, and I don't know what she's been advised by her legal advisors or Mr. McIntyre.
Are you suggesting doing two of these? A two percent Election Department and a full one somewhere else? Uh, was that your suggestion?
That's not my suggestion. I just want to clarify what they're being asked, because Supervisor Judd informed everyone here to keep doing the process that we're doing. And I I believe Supervisor, I don't wanna speak for you, but this process that you voted on on Monday, the twenty fourth, that this happens sometime after the normal election process taking place.
That's what I understood from my perspective.
So she wants.
So you're basically in two processes.
Correct. That's, I mean, that's what it sounds like.
I just want to clarify it.
Yeah, I.
My statement was kind of
What I would note is you you have Ms. Mara and Mr. McIntyre right there. Ask them what Ms. Mara is gonna do.
Well, and I and I believe that Ms. Mara has laid out the procedure for the hand count process that she intends to proceed. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And the hand count has to be done. It must be conducted unless there's no participation from the parties prior to canvas. So.
Realistically, in order to properly canvass the election by the date required for the canvass, Ms. Mara has to conduct her Election Director's responsibilities in accordance with the procedures she's had for the last, I forget how many years. Um, in order to get that canvas. As I, as I'm hearing it, as we're in the room, any other additional hand count is, has yet to be determined whether it can even occur, depending on whether uh the Dems put forward additional names based on some of the numbers Recorder Stevens has uh provided, and also depending on how to obtain a secure, an additional secure facility and avoid chain of custody issues with the ballots. Um, and then just note that six oh two, that entire statute provides, notwithstanding any other law, the county officer in charge of elections, which is Ms. Mara, shall retain custody of the ballots for purposes of performing any required hand counts. And the officer shall provide the security of those ballots. So what's very concerning for me for the county for liability purposes is any talk of removing ballots from the elections. I don't see how that can be done.
Custody.
Are you saying I have no chain of custody of ballots?
I'm saying under that sta- under that statute, it is the officer in charge of elections. And under the A G opinion that was provided, or not, it's not a formal opinion that made it clear. Um, they even note that the elections that is in charge here is the director, the County's Director of Elections.
It's my understanding that.
Clear that L G M three days ago because the board voted on it.
Is that, as I read the agenda item, the agenda item did not the agenda item ordered an expanded hand count pursuant to this statute of all precincts.
We missed the first part of that. Recorder going order.
Right, to conduct.
And then I got, it's you now, Mr. Stevens, it's you. Is that? So is that no longer the case?
I do remember.
Because I'm, I'm.
Because I was there for the room, in the room.
I do hear.
Right.
So is that no longer the case?
What I'm saying is, I didn't, I didn't read the board's past agenda item. The, sorry, the agenda item that passed to strip the normal responsibilities of the elector, the Election Director. Um, did read it to essentially add, and this was a discussion you might have, add a responsibility to Recorder, should the Recorder take it on, of conducting the expanded income of all precincts. That's where it becomes very problematic in terms of the hows, the wheres, and all those things.
Well, it's a different explanation. I just want clarification. If I'm not involved in it, it's fine, but if I am, I need to know where I stand. Remember saying it to me that it is now you, they voted on it. It's now you, Mr. Stevens. Was it, is that not?
That's, that's not my exact word, but we can, the the Supervisor Crosby said or and was very clear.
Wow, that was my argument in that same.
And then uh, and they used you for the work session, they used your plan, and it's seems from the direction I'm getting today is we still proceed with our normal process. And I I believe Supervisor English is fine with conducting our normal process and our Director of Elections still providing the normal process. Supervisor Judd is fine with that process. There's gonna be a separate process that you're involved in, and you're.
This is all new, three days.
So, so you're you're changing course again. I I I've not done anything. I I'm listening. I'm trying to observe, and I'm trying to hear what's what's happening. And and I I've not put any words in.
I think you're trying to figure that meeting typed up. And you'll see it totally. And I was arguing for the Elections Director to do this, and you're like, no, they voted you, Mr. Stevens, to do this. And I said, can they do that?
Absolutely. I I would love whatever we have to provide, and I will read through it carefully. And if I am wrong, don't be.
I'll read through to you.
Absolutely. Uh, right next to each other.
You gotta learn.
Um, but I I think the direction I'm getting so far is at least at this point, keep going through the process that was established by the Election Director. That's all I can. I think there's a consensus for that direction.
And that is fine, but I'm not satisfied with just that. Just want you to know that. I want to go through with the full hand count audit, which would be after the Election Director has satisfied um the statutes, the entire thing that has to be done to complete an election. And then I, and I disagree that the that the Election Director is the only one that can have custody of those ballots. As long as they're signed out properly, they would go into a secured vehicle or secured mode of transportation. They could go to a secure place that a in a building that has security to monitor it. Um, then they would be handed, actually, the custody, chain of custody would go to the group, each individual group table manager that is handling the ballots and doing the counting. And then they would be signed back into the secure part of the building where we're doing the um audit. So yes, there's the, what will happen is the chain of custody will grow, but she isn't the end of the chain of custody. I mean, it, things have been audited and recounted a lot, and I think Ms. Mara would recognize that other people can still receive chain of custody.
So Madam Chair, the um the custody ends with me after the election. Then the the ballots go to the Treasurer's vault. And at that point, they're retained for the two years that we keep them, and that's a court order to get them removed from the Treasurer's vault. So the process, once we're done with the canvas, states that with the canvas, there are no recounts that we have to do, court order recounts. Those ballots belong to the County Treasurer.
I think that happens after the county canvases.
Right, but from what I'm hearing today, is Judd at least wants to keep the process as as it has been, but wants the audit to take place after. And so um, the chain of custody, from what I'm hearing, would be from the Treasurer to.
Well, my understanding is Treasurer won't take custody till.
After the audit.
Right.
After the Kansas, Kansas.
Wait, wait, I I'm hearing something. You don't want to, you want to do this before the canvas?
That that's what the agenda item says.
I know. That's what I'm trying to figure out here. You you say it one way, Ms. Judd, that you'll wait till everything is over, and then you just want to audit it.
The agenda item said that it would be done before the canvas. If we, we will set up a time and a date, which would probably be the Monday following the election, to begin the hand count, hundred percent hand count um audit, well, the audit of all precincts. We will begin that. We will conclude that in time for our um canvas of the election. And that's what um Recorder Stevens is trying to do. He's trying to determine how many days will that take? How many people do we need? Where will we locate it, depending on the size of the crowd we have that are able able to count or offered up to count? Um, it it is a lot of things to think about. And let me just say thank you, David Stevens. You've been, you've been attentive and and I'm, I would like to see this go through.
Well, I, it will be my fondest hope that if I have any of, any uh authority, any um any way that I can convince the Chair of the Democratic Party in Cochise County to not provide people for this fiasco, that will be my intent, because I think that every day that we start keep discussing this, then people are wondering, well, what's wrong with our elections? And it has never since I've been on the board, been a problem that the public suspected that we were doing anything wrong, that we were ever accused of doing anything wrong, that our elections were accurate. And both of you were uh elected during the last election. Um, Stevens was elected, you know, nope, nobody has challenged the fact, but you're making all of this controversy and you're you're tying it to El Paso or Ohio or Florida or someplace. And I'm going, no, I don't want to be a part of it. And if I can't stop our conversations about it, then I'm hoping that I can stop it if the Democratic Party goes. That's mine. Thank you.
And I think suggestion, Madam Chair, that on under the statute, the, as Recorder Stevens pointed out, um, it's a Tuesday, the deadline for submission of names by the board.
Um, and there's two more days provided in there. They don't have enough time to divide them by eight, that they can find next morning. So technically it's Thursday. And it's this very rapidly approaching that
it it may be appropriate to consider resetting the work session Wednesday or Thursday of next week to see if if there is equal participation. And and if the the hand count, the expanded hand count that involves all precincts that was anticipated by the Board's action item, um, that if that is is even something that can occur depending on the will basically of the party chairs.
Couple comments. I don't have any better numbers next Thursday. I just have a couple of things. I'll have, I'll have a better number of what I processed for Thursday, so. And if you go through with doing the two counts, I could lay what I'm going to do by two days. Take forty dollars late this process, I'm gonna start it by morning. Canvas is the deadline, fifteen, it's five P M. Sure, that'll be. Then I'll do short it.
But are you gonna be the individual that um contacts um Democratic Party Chair to find out if they're voting.
Yeah, right after this meeting. I've got it queued up. I've got a couple of statutes in there about it. They they don't have half Democrats on their team. They can't have Republicans. I mean, probably seventy five percent of people can't be from the party. Uh, so, but technically, they could have Republicans on the team. But if they go with seventy five percent. So that that has to be taken into consideration also. That allows other members of the county to just guy who just can't sort together.
But if, if if those names are submitted, they'll submit it to Ms. Mara.
Well, that's a different case now, because you're doing two processes.
Well, I just.
She's got her six, she needs four. Two percent. So unless I'm wrong, I'm looking at another list.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, is. Well, and that's what I'm saying, is the statute anticipates that, that list is provided by the party chairs to the elections.
So I think you need to make a distinction.
Because now the United, the United processes decided that statute, or that statute was cited specifically, you didn't intend to. So I'm just, it just, as a matter, just to clarify for everybody in the room, is it appropriate to have another session after the Tuesday deadline? Obviously, there's substantial public interest in this. Obviously, there's been substantial reporting on it, so there'd be no question that both parties know that there are additional names needed. And I think if your numbers were as of right now, I think. Is it fifty per each side?
That's an estimation.
Has an estimate.
Because that, that provides thirty-three. Teams.
Right.
They, they can set by, they come in with fifteen each.
So then, that's just, that's my suggestion.
But is it fair enough to say that process supervised, you want me to do? How, the other officer in charge of that election process?
I don't believe so, because I don't believe that that agenda item modifies the way six oh two statute should be read. But instead of conducting it pursuant.
You know, I answered the question.
Right.
It, it's something that needs to be answered, at least for me.
A- absolutely. And, and that's why it is, it has created a great deal of confusion and strife, and I apologize for that. But in particular, we're talking about where are these ballots, which are people's ballots, going to be held as a secure, is Ms. Mara able to complete the process which is necessary for, for to legally canvas the election? And so, you know, the purpose of a work session is to, for everybody to talk about the ins and outs and be able to talk freely about it, and, um, what I'm hearing as one of the large barriers is the potential that there won't be enough participants. Just, just, just talking about participants alone, never mind a secure location.
Yeah.
Right.
The whole place.
Right. And, um, that there's that potential, and as a result, the county may wish to deconvene, reset, or just set another work session into next week, um, at a time when we may have a definite yes or no on the parties that are.
I don't think you need a work session, a decision for me, that's what I'm saying. But if we're going to have both of it.
Sort of if you.
If, if one party doesn't participate, the answer is very clear. If the, the goal is set up, as was, one person makes a determination, it's shocking. That would be me. Right? Is it just? Because we're, we're going back and forth and being, it's just, are you okay with me make that determination? That we have a covered out of people.
I think that's something that has to happen with the board as well.
But I don't think so.
I have a comment. I think Mr. McIntyre needs to make up his mind whether he's providing illegal advice to Mr. Stevens or not, and whether you're providing legal advice to the board or not, because, uh, I'm not clear on it, since we voted against item number one, which you are clearly against, and, uh, we voted for item number two, and I don't know where you are on the, uh, uh, the legality of, uh, agenda item number two, which passed. So I'm not sure that, uh, that we ought to be listening to the county attorney, uh, if he's not a, if he's not either, uh, representing the board or representing Mr. Stevens. Could you tell us who you're representing, Mr. McIntyre?
My ethical obligation to a client continues until that client has counsel typically. I can't simply abandon um, the client, as I, as I made very clear at the board meeting, I felt that.
That's not clear.
I didn't hear you, Supervisor Crosby, sorry, I was trying to finish my sentence.
Can I, can I interject two questions then? Or is it considered now an illegal process? In your eyes, what we just all talked about?
In my, in my, it remains my opinion that conducting, whether it's called the expanded hand count, or, uh, a separate process that as Judd refers to Supervisor Judd, sorry, that, that remains or by EPM and, and statute discovery, and in particular, as Supervisor English pointed out, and as, as our offices pointed out, and as the Secretary of State's office pointed out, the Purcell doctrine, because we are changing the way we handle this election, the way we handle ballots, changing it now nine days before the election.
So you are not providing your civil counsel?
What I, what I inform you, if you want me to say it outside of the scope of our discussion was, was that you would need legal counsel, or the board would need legal counsel in the event this process is, is proceeding, because we haven't begun it yet, hasn't actually begun. Um, that you would need separate legal counsel, because I have already advised you that I don't believe it's lawful to conduct it. And that, given that the board in that agenda item provided for either you or the election official to conduct this process, that I didn't feel ethically I could advise you during the process as to what to do. So right now, we are in this window in between when the process itself will begin, but still during the election, and we're still conducting public meetings and those kind of things. I believe under statute, that the advisors to the board still need to be here, and still need to offer what advice I can as to both meeting law issues, as to the agenda items you're discussing. And, and I think we have this window, window. Now, obviously, the board will also be discussing counsel, attempts with outside counsel at lead on, I don't want to get the date.
Tuesday, the, the, November first.
Lead on November first, which may then alleviate some of, is obviously the confusion.
One more question. When do you consider legally, I've started the process, by emailing the chairs, or when I get control of the ballots?
I believe it's a question of whether this expanded hand count occurs. And so, in terms of between now and if there's an additional work session, et cetera, do you need to discuss something with me? I'm happy to do it. But in terms of saying, hey, uh, do you feel that this is, is a secure facility, do you feel that I can remove ballots, those kind of things? I'm absolutely not ethically comfortable conducting, having that conversation.
No, my question, when you, when do you consider be starting? That requires me to get my own counsel. So if I email the chairs in twenty minutes, will I have started this process in your eyes?
No.
Okay. So my question is, in your eyes, when, when in this process do I legally technically start?
When, when you and or the board, depending if it occur when. If lawsuit is filed, maybe, or, or, or their office, or Ms. Mara, et cetera. Um, if, if, when lawsuit has been filed, because then the outside counsel, we're in the event that we get to twenty-four hours past Election Day, um, which actually, it sounds like it's not then, after Ms. Mara's process. Um, at that point, you need counsel to be able to discuss the ins and outs of what we can and can't do, and any issues that arise during this proposed expanded, that sounds like a secondary hand.
Just so you know, I will follow the same timeline. We'll start twenty-four hours after the election is called. But I can't wait till the first process is done, start the second process. Because that is pretty minimal stuff. It's dealing with people's, what people pass, work, training, and structure. Got their way to that next Monday, and this is only five, this is, that point, finish. So I will start twenty-four hours, before twenty-four hours of the beginning of elections, which is seven P M, I'll choose.
In which case I will.
At that point, I started?
Well, absolutely.
Okay.
And I would again suggest to the board that additional work session.
I, I think that, um, in writing the letter to the Secretary of State, Supervisor Judd, or Supervisor Crosby, signed that they did not want to do anything that was illegal. We come back to the situation, and I'm speaking to my colleagues, my two board members, and the county attorney advised us before we voted on this that the county attorney felt that it was illegal. So I don't know how you could ask the county attorney to represent you when the county attorney said what you're proposing to do is illegal and you chose to do it anyway. So I'm confused here as to, I know you, Ms. Judd, you said you want to do the right thing, but we're going down a path based on a decision that you were told by the county attorney was illegal.
Except I never, I never believed that, and, and we can't allow the attorney to affect our decisions. Um, he, he should not tell us things that make us vote one way or another. Um, that's in statute as well. So that's where I'm going. I'm not saying that I want to break the law. I absolutely do not want to break the law. But there is a legal way to do this, and whether Mr. McIntyre says what David Stevens, or what Recorder Stevens is proposing or not, is legal or not legal today at this meeting, we, he has his own counsel prepared. We have our own counsel prepared. So do we want to today start having them in our meetings and working with us, or do we want to wait until he has, or until the election is called, or do we want to wait until the ballots are actually in, in the recorder's custody? Um, that was a very clear question. When, when do you guys step back? And do, does our counsel participate with us? When is that line of demarcation? And maybe you can't tell me today. In all fairness, I wouldn't expect you to be able to tell me that right now. But that would be something we're interested in knowing. It'd be good to maybe have an email or something sent out, so we can mull over it in our letter. Just, just win the timeline, what it looks like to you guys.
Supervisor Judd, it, it would be very difficult for me to answer that. Um, and it's also, uh, somewhat perplexing to me to hear, uh, you refer to our counsel, given that the board tabled the discussion of obtaining outside counsel um, until November first. And and, and maybe you just misspoke, but maybe you have a counsel that you believe, you hope that the board would choose to maintain, but I think it's a mistake to already refer to the board having separate counsel when there has not been a vote on.
Okay, I, I accept that. I accept that explanation, but it would be kind of good to know when when you plan on stepping out, so that we know when we need to be covered. So that might be at our work sess- I mean, our special session on Tuesday. I, I, I accept that.
Yes, you, you, you chose to not address it at the last meeting, and you said that you wanted to address it on November the first.
Okay, I agree with that.
That was the decision of the board, not the county attorney. Is there any other positive talk that, um, that can take place on the direction regarding the expanded hand count of ballots? And, uh, normally, I would, I would hope that when we come together like this, we could have some kind of a summary, but I, in no way do I want to rely on my summary of what took place today.
I want it recorded.
Anyone else have anything to add to this situation? Supervisor Crosby?
No, no further comments at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Who have your judge?
No, thank you.
Okay. Actually, I have one comment.
Okay. Recorder Stevens.
I'm going, I'm going to email the chairs tonight. That was a question, I'm going to provide a list, invite it to the meeting. Since the spa's open. So, I'll let you know.
Sounds perfect. All right. Next meeting is on Tuesday, November the first, at, uh, ten o'clock A M, at the Board of Supervisors Detective Conference Room for a special Board of Supervisors meeting. Having said that, what session adjourned?